Good evening, Cedar Falls, and welcome to our Committee of the Whole meeting for Monday, October 4th, 2021. Our one topic tonight is the Downtown Zoning Ordinance's private parking requirements. We have 60 minutes aside for that. And giving our presentation tonight will be Planning and Community Services Manager Karen Howard. This meeting was asked for by City Council because of the first reading of the new Downtown zoning ordinance, having some questions to it, and having some protests filed by citizens right before that meeting. So we wanted an opportunity to find out more and to give this a full airing before going into the vote. So with that, I'll open it up to Ms. Howard if you'd like to start us off on the formal presentation tonight.
Okay, good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm going to, the focus, first of all, let's talk about really the focus of tonight's discussion is really the parking requirements proposed in the Downtown zoning code. We're only talking about parking requirements for new development, and I want to, I think there's some misinformation out there that it applies to existing properties. So zoning code requirements only kick in, and this is true of any kind of zoning requirement, they only kick in when there's new development proposed. So the zoning only applies to new development. There's no change required for existing development. And there's also no requirement for existing properties to share their parking. So this is all about what happens in the future with new development. This discussion is also not about the city-owned public parking lots, or whether to build, or how to fund a parking ramp at the council's discretion. These topics can be scheduled for a future meeting. Just because this topic is a little bit complex, and I know we've gone through this a number of times, just an overview of what we'll be talking about tonight, the background and intent of the proposed zoning ordinance, summary of the current parking requirements, and the summary of the proposed parking requirements, and then we have a comparison between current and proposed parking with a couple different examples that we're going to run through. Just to back up a little bit about why we're doing this, the purpose behind this came from the Vision Plan. What we heard was we want to reduce fragmented, uncoordinated, inefficient, single-purpose parking, meaning parking that only serves one development. Downtown, we want to provide flexibility for redevelopment of small sites and for preservation and reuse of historic buildings. That's something we heard from Community Main Street, so we wanted to have those zoning requirements allow for adaptive reuse of existing buildings. And then to reduce unnecessary cost. After all, there's no such thing as free parking. Those costs get passed down in the form of higher lease rates and higher rents if we have unnecessary parking required. And then to reserve limited and valuable downtown land for revenue-producing land uses such as retail, restaurants, offices, and residents. So that's really what we were aiming for with these requirements. Just to point out, there's some unintended consequences of high parking requirements downtown. If you set the parking requirements too high, it does stunt the growth of downtown. It shifts development to outlying areas where the land is less costly. And of course, that cost of parking is passed down to businesses, customers, and residents, as I said, into higher lease rates and residential rents. And just to point out that unused parking, if it's sitting on private lots, really generates no revenue and no tax base. So once again, we're not talking about the public lots here, we're talking about private parking that sits on private lots. So there's been questions asked, will lowering the parking requirements cause spillover parking in the neighborhoods? You know, how much parking is needed for private development on the private lots? Are the current parking requirements higher than what is demanded in the market for private development? So one of the things that the consultants looked at, we looked at when we were trying to develop the standards for the new code, is it was based on a parking study that was done in the fall of 2018. This was prior to the Downtown Vision Plan, and prior to, of course, the pandemic. So we had a parking consultant come to town, they did actual parking counts on the street. This is just one thing to point out, this was a parking count that was done on Friday, October 26, 2018. This was Halloween weekend, so it was a busy weekend, Friday evening. And the point of this with the parking, this is from the parking study itself, is to point out that while the on-street parking and the public service lots, while the public parking was pretty full that night, the private surface lots, these are private development, sat at only 52% filled. So there was 172 open spots in these private lots, meaning they couldn't be used for public parking during that peak time in the evening. So that's really what we're talking about, is trying to right-size the parking requirements in the new code. As the parking study pointed out, the underutilization of private off-street parking in the evenings after 5:00 was documented in every collection of data that was conducted during that study. And this condition underscores the fact that parking exempt districts are good public policy for downtown urban centers, and that requiring individual land uses to create their own onsite parking is bad public policy. Those are words from the parking study. In other words, when individual land uses are required to create their own onsite parking, the typical result is an oversupply of private parking that can't then be shared with other So the parking study had several approaches. In the parking study recommendations, one was to improve the management of public parking, the on-street parking in the city lots, to unlock existing underutilized private parking lots during peak evening hours. One of those is, the example is a private partnership agreement with Viking Pump, which opened up 69 additional parking spaces in the evening for public use. And like I said, that is a private agreement with the city that we did for an existing lot, but that was all negotiated through an agreement. The other thing the parking study said is right-size the parking requirements in the zoning code. And that's really what we're talking about too much tonight, requiring too much private off-street parking just perpetuates those underutilized private parking lots that we saw in the parking study. So the current private parking requirements downtown in the CBD overlay, there's no parking required for non-residential uses. Parking is negotiated for each project that comes through, but in practice, it's been one space per bedroom, with on-street parking counted toward visitor parking requirements in the downtown. Outside the CBD, the parking requirements are higher, one space per unit. For one-bedroom units, it's two spaces per unit. Now, I have these next few slides are the parking requirements that are proposed. Now, we've gone through this a number of times with council, so I'm going to go through this fairly quickly because we've already reviewed this. But if anybody wants to go back to any of these slides, if there's questions about specific requirements, we certainly, after I'm all done, if there's questions, we can come back to these, because I'm going to go through these pretty quickly to leave time for questions. So one of the things in downtown, there's no minimum parking requirements for the following things. And this, existing parcade buildings, those are buildings from Main Street between First and Sixth Street, regardless of use. This is what allows for the adaptive reuse of those buildings on Main Street. And it's one of the things that Community Main Street really pushed with the Vision Plan. Ground floor commercial space, there's no change from the existing ground floor commercial space, no parking required. That's the way it is today. The reuse or renovation of an existing building in which there is no floor area increase, and the use is non-residential, in other words, commercial development, is exempt. Now, this is a little bit of a change. It keeps the existing properties the same as the current regulations, so that the new shared parking requirement for the upper floors for commercial do not apply to existing buildings. So that's one other way that we're holding harmless those existing properties in the So for new development downtown, residential, .5 spaces per bedroom, with .25 spaces per bedroom for shared parking. And I'll go through what shared parking means in just a moment. For residential in row houses, duplexes, single-family houses in these downtown areas, it's one per unit plus one per bedroom for each bedroom beyond two. And there's no shared parking requirement for these types of developments. So for row home development, they just have to have the parking for each individual unit. For new development, commercial uses on upper floors, now this is new, this is an additional parking requirement that we don't have right now in the code, because we heard that upper floor commercial, such as new employers downtown, maybe should provide some additional parking. That's what we heard during the Vision Plan. So this is a new parking requirement in the proposed code. So for upper floor, like office space, for example, it's 1 and 1/4 spaces per 1,000 square For new development in the neighborhood frontages, these are the areas outside, generally outside the CBD, residential at .75 spaces per bedroom. And for the few non-residential uses in those areas, we keep the parking requirements about the same as it was, one space per 300 square feet. So the question was asked if I would go back over what is shared parking? Shared parking is parking that's accessible to the public at least 12 hours a day, and designated by appropriate signage and markings, which is onsite or within 600 feet of walking distance of that site. So in other words, if they have a shared parking requirement, then for new development, this is for a new project, they would have to provide it onsite. They could count the on-street parking that's next to it, or if they have a site that's within 600 feet, they could provide their shared parking on that. Now, one thing to remind, the shared parking requirement would not obligate owners to give up any percentage of their parking. In other words, the goal is to maximize the usage of that parking for 24 hours a day. So in other words, when that developer, what that property owner's not using their parking, it can then be shared with other users. So they'd put it in a location on their site that would be available then for use. For example, for an office building, here are some examples here for parking for an office that might be used from 8:00 to 6:00 p.m. on Monday to Friday. It would otherwise sit empty for most of the evenings and weekends. Instead of that, the goal here is to make some portion of that parking available to other users during the night and weekend hours to help relieve the parking crunch in downtown, say during the evening peak hours. Similarly, for parking for an apartment or condominium building, with residents parking their most evenings and weekends, it might sit primarily empty during weekdays. So a portion of that parking would be made available during those hours. Not all the parking, but just a small portion of it. So if somebody's working from home, for example, obviously, a portion of that is always reserved parking, because we require .5 spaces reserved onsite. But for those people that work offsite and might be vacating their parking space during the day, then it could be made available. And this would be arranged with the developer, with the property owner, when they develop their property. So here's a slide that just kind of compares current and proposed. I'm not going to go through that, but it's a good slide if we need to refer back to it during the discussion. Now, I'd like to run through just a couple examples here to show how the parking requirements would work on a real site. These are a couple properties that have recently been developed. This one is a three-story commercial building. The first floor is retail and office. Second and third floor has approximately 14,000 square feet of office space. So under the current code, no parking would be required for this building. In fact, it was not required for this building. Under the proposed code, it would require 1.25 spaces per 1,000 square feet. So 18 shared parking spaces would be required if this building was built today under the proposed code. There's 10 on-street parking spaces adjacent to this particular site, so those would count toward that shared, but eight additional spaces would be required onsite or within 600 feet of that site. So the proposed code, the net difference is the proposed code requires eight more spaces than currently is required in the downtown. And those would have to be made available to the public for a minimum of 12 hours a day. So for example, with that upper floor office, when those office workers are gone for the day, those shared parking spaces would be available to other users. This is a three-story residential building. It contains 21 two-bedroom condos. It has currently 32 structured parking spaces under the building, has additional surface parking behind the building, has a current occupancy of 28 adults. Under the current code, the requirement is 42 parking spaces. Eight visitor parking spaces are required, and there's currently 18 on-street parking spaces in front of this building. Under the proposed code, only 21 spaces would be required, 11 shared parking spaces. And of course, those on-street parking spaces would count toward that shared space. So the net difference in this particular example is that the current code requires 21 more spaces than the proposed code. So some food for thought, are 42 spaces needed for these 21 two-bedroom condos, when 66% of those units are occupied by only one adult. And I know that changes over time, but that is just some food for thought. Are we really requiring too much parking that then sits empty for much of the time? So here's some more food for thought, the costs versus benefits of keeping private parking requirements high in the downtown. So off-street parking is expensive, as I said, it's costly to build, and you have to maintain it, takes up valuable downtown space. Someone has to pay for it, the property owner, the developer, the customers and residents. And I say the property owner, because of course, if they go to sell their property, and a developer can only build 10 units instead of 15 units, of course, they're going to get less money for that particular property when they sell it. Of course, it's more money for the developer when they go to develop the property, and those costs can be then passed down to customers and residents of the building. And then just to think about the opportunity cost, because sometimes this may make it so projects cannot occur. So if you have fewer residents and office workers downtown because of parking requirements that are set too high, that prevents new development from occurring, you reduce that future revenues and market potential for downtown businesses, because the employees, of course, and the residents downtown are a stable market for the commercial downtown. And then, of course, to think about the benefits of keeping private parking requirements high, it does reduce the potential for spillover parking into the surrounding neighborhoods. And so just to, food for thought about how do we balance those particular concerns? How much of a concern is it with the parking issues that are proposed with regard to spillover parking? So just to recap, the parking requirements proposed in the Downtown zoning codes are for new development, not for existing. There's no change required for existing development. Existing properties do not have to share their parking. City-owned public parking lots are not affected by the new code. Shared parking requirements will add to the available parking during peak times. Developers, property owners of new development do not have to give up their property for shared parking. It only has to be made available when they are not using it. Parking requirements in the code are minimums, so of course, developers and property owners are free to provide more parking to meet the parking demand for their development. And this last point is really about the market, and developers and property owners really knowing the market better than a standard parking requirement. So they are going to make their, do what is necessary to make their projects successful. One of the projects I'd like to point out with that is, for example, the new Community Bank and Trust building downtown, there was no parking required for that commercial building, and yet they put parking requirement, they put parking in for that project, because they knew exactly how much parking they would need for their project. So I think, thinking about the zoning code as being the minimum necessary and not setting it too high are some of the goals that we're trying to achieve with the new code. So I'd be happy to answer. Any questions?
We are at 6:10 now, and I'd like to open for about 20 minutes up to about 6:30 for initial council questions, and then we do have citizens here as well. I'd like to have that open for comment and questions, too, and then bring it back to council. So Councilwoman Harding, if you'd like to start us off?
Sure. One of the questions I had, it's multifold, but if someone were to, let's say someone had owned property downtown, and they had a three-story building, and they sold it, and they had a lot, would the sale trigger any rezoning, or would it just be, it would continue to be grandfathered in?
Right, as long as the building is just sold as it is, and it's being used the same way as it was before, there'd be no trigger of any new zoning requirements.
Okay. And then, they're also grandfathered in using the upper stories of not having to share their parking, correct?
That's right, yeah.
And then, my last part of that question is, I've gotten a lot of questions about redeveloping, or renovating, not redeveloping. Do we have by chance the slide, or could you go over the example of how much would you have to renovate to trigger the new zoning?
So if it's just interior renovation of the property, and you're not increasing the square footage of the building, you're not adding on to the building, then of course, there's no new requirements triggered. It's just, you're changing the use, the change of use doesn't trigger new requirements. So if they are expanding, the parking requirements would kick in for that expanded area. So any new area would be required to have parking provided for the new area, whatever the parking requirement is. If it's commercial, and it's new, say it's just a one-story building, and you're adding on a wing, a new wing to the building, of course, commercial doesn't require, ground floor commercial doesn't require any parking, so there wouldn't be anything new for that. Somebody's adding a story to their building, if that added story is for residential, for example, then the residential parking requirements would apply to just that portion of the building.
And then the last part of it, which is, if there was an act of God, say something burned down, and they wanted to rebuild it there, would it be under the new zoning code because they had to rebuild it?
So I think it's, you know, you're going to make me think hard about this requirement in the zoning code, but I think if it's destroyed by more than 50% of its value, you know, then it has to be rebuilt to the new standard.
The new standard.
But if it's less than 50%, they can rebuild and just rebuild as is.
Okay.
But I might have to get back to you, I guess I'm just trying to remember off the top of my head on that one.
Thanks.
Other initial questions? Councilwoman Bier.
Mandatory shared parking, to me, seems like an infringement on the owner's rights. They are going to have the expenses on the maintenance and upkeep. Has that been challenged in court at all?
No, I don't believe so, because they only have to share it a portion of the time. Most of it is still their parking, and they're deciding how they want to use their parking. So at the very beginning of the project, they would be coming up with an agreement to this, with the city on how they, with their site plan, on how they wanted to design their parking.
Have there been any court cases on it in other cities about it being mandatory?
Not that I'm aware of, but...
Any other questions from council at this point?
I have another one of you.
Oh, please, yes, go ahead.
You mentioned earlier in the one slide about the private surface lots on that October date, in the evening, were 52% full. How full were they during the day, out of curiosity?
You know, I don't have the slide from the parking study for that during the daytime, but I know that the parking study showed that the peak time was really the biggest crunch time for parking downtown. But certainly, we can look at the parking study, they had a number of different times that they counted the parking downtown.
So you don't know offhand if, any part of the day, if it was higher?
I don't, I think the highest parking count was during the evening peak on the weekends.
Mr. Mayor? Yes, Councilwoman Bier.
Isn't that the same time that people would be home at their residences and be using their parking spots, therefore, shared parking? When do you decide when it's shared and when it's not shared?
So it depends on the project, of course, and this is not intended to be a substitute for public parking. So for, for example, for a new building downtown that had upper floor office, of course, that shared parking would be available during the evening peak, because most likely, those office workers would be home. For a residential property, if somebody were developing that, of course, they have the right to decide when they want to share their parking. They have to make it available for 12 hours a day for shared parking. So you're right, for a residential property, they may decide, that developer may decide, okay, I want to share it during the day, so it would be open for lunchtime or use for the public. So really, it's controlled by the property owner when they want to share it.
So then what about times during COVID when all the residential people would be at home all day long, and maybe work from home? How would they still be required to give up their parking spot?
Well, they'd have to figure out how they wanted to share it during that time. Now, I, you know, I mean, that's a big speculation.
It just seems like a bizarre concept when somebody's actually the owner, and they're forced to give up their right to their parking spot. Just seems like quite a strange concept.
Okay, so with that, if there's any other questions for now, then I will turn it over for public comment and questions. We'll do it a little bit different tonight, because there may be some technical questions that you have to bring forward. So if you have questions, we'll answer those immediately after you speak, and so that way we don't get anything lost in transit there. So who would like to start us off on the public end? Mr. Frey? Name an address for the record, please, sir. Five minutes max.
TJ Frey, 1319 Austen Way. I just have a few questions, actually a whole list of them, but I'll just hit the ones I feel are important. A question about liability during shared, times of shared parking, who's liable for what happens on that parking lot? In addition to that, if the developer is required to give up parking for 12 hours, who enforces that? Is it... Is it, are we turning it back over to the property owner to enforce their parking laws forced on them by redeveloping, new development downtown? And if, you know, we talked about the parking requirements and somebody may not want a parking stall because they do live downtown, but what about the next person who may want a stall or two? Those, those numbers, you know, one person, one adult per two-bedroom place isn't going to happen forever. There's going to be, you know, turnover downtown. And so I guess basically, or what happens during after-hours work? Attorneys and such who may be preparing for trial or restaurant workers or something that may have to stay late, all of a sudden, you know, we're having to change agreements because, you know, work, work changes, work hours change. And is it 12 straight hours all at once or can the property owner say, you know, from 3:00 AM to 7:00 AM is four hours and then mix another four hours in someplace else? Or does it have to be all 12 hours at the same time? You know, and then there was talk about, you know, private developers being able to provide more parking if they wish. The reality is there's no, there's no money in parking. No developer is going to put in more parking than what's required of them because they don't make any money with parking stalls. And then a good example was Viking Pump. That was negotiated with the city. If the city is interested in shared parking, maybe they should be negotiating with business owners, just like we did with Viking Pump, instead of requiring them to give up parking. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Frye. So I saw for questions, was liability, or who's liable, has liability on those lots? Who enforces the lots? What happens after hours in turnover? And are they 12 consecutive hours or can they be split? So Ms. Howard, if you'd want to take those?
Okay. That was a lot there, so.
I can repeat if needed.
I might defer to Mr. Rogers on the liability question. I think we had answered that question to council in a memo to council on how the liability would be handled in a past council meeting.
Sure, so Mr. Rogers, be able to take that one for us?
Depends upon liability for what? So if a, if a motorist hits another motorist, the motor should be liable. If, on the other hand, there's a condition on the premises that caused an injury to a pedestrian, for instance, then the owner of the premises would be liable. I guess, I thought there's a third scenario, but I can't think of it right now. So it'd be the person at fault would be liable. It doesn't, an owner is not an insurer of safety on the premises, so there'd have to be something, somebody did wrong for liability to attach in the first place.
Wouldn't it be similar, Mr. Rogers, to, for example, somebody parking in the Hy-Vee parking lot? Kind of a similar situation?
Exactly the same situation.
Right.
And then a question was about what happens after hours for turnover? You mentioned a lawyer working in an evening case, like what does that do for the requirements?
So of course, we're never going to be able to come up with a standard set that's going to adjust to every situation. The idea is to try to balance and not try to get into the private market too much. The developer and the property owner are the best to be able to say when their parking is, should be available for sharing. They're going to know their tenants, they're going to know when it, when it's best to share their parking. The requirement is fairly flexible. So for at least 12 hours, the public parking is provided in any 12, 24-hour period. So at least 12 of those hours, for at least eight of those hours have to be provided during either business or nighttime hours, depending on whether the primary use will be for commercial or for residential uses. So when somebody brings in a project, a developer brings in a project, they're going to be able to say, okay, this, this is, I know my market. I'm going to, I'm trying to make money. I know how much parking to provide for the market that I'm going for. I'm going for residential, I'm going for commercial. They're going to be able to dictate then, say, I want to make it available during these eight hours because I know that I'm going to have, you know, five spaces that are going to be, you know, I can count on to be available during those times that will be open to the public. So like it, it's not all their parking, of course. It's just the amount, that 0.25 spaces that has to be shared. So it leaves it flexible for that property owner to make that decision and talk with the city about how they want to share their parking. And I, as far as, it would be similar to the way it's signed, you know, how they would manage it is it would be signed, just like private parking is signed right now and like similar to Viking Pump. They've got a sign up that says private parking, but it says available to the public during these hours. And so if it becomes a problem, then it becomes a problem to, to enforce it if it's, you know, most people will follow the rules, but of course you sometimes have to tow.
Okay, and just to finish out those, a question about the consecutiveness of it, could they be split? You said you have to have eight hours dedicated, but can those other four hours be any other time of the day that makes sense?
Right, so yeah, eight of them have to be during those hours, but they can split them and decide, you know, based on their project, how they want to split them.
Okay, so not necessarily consecutive. All right, so other questions from the gallery? Citizens want to come forward? Mr. Vajpay?
Eshaun Vajpay, 3831 Conver Lane, just picking up where we left off. How is nighttime hours defined? That could be, I mean, and how are business hours defined? Because one person's business runs from 5:00 PM to 2:00 AM. Another person's business is 9:00 AM to 5:00 PM. And what does nighttime mean? That brings me back to a point where I, I think this code needs some work. Too much ambiguity. Ambiguity is not good in a code. The shared parking requirement not being triggered upon transfer or sale, where does it say that? I couldn't find it. Is there a different code citation within the city code that relates to that? If so, provide the citation, the exact citation. If it's not in there, it needs to be in there. Nighttime needs to be defined. It's not stated. And so if we're, if we're talking about the peak time, which I'm assuming we're talking about, so like eight, they want you to share your parking, 8:00 AM to like 8:00 PM, something like that. They don't want you sharing it at 2:00 AM to 3:00 AM to 4:00 AM to 5:00 AM because no one needs it then. So then if you boil it down to that, it's not just 12 hours out of 24, it's more like 12 hours out of 16. Depending on this definition, which we don't have one for nighttime. Is it darkness, how much sun there is? I don't know. These are problems. This is an ill-considered stab in the dark, no pun intended, at some of these very hyper technical issues that we're talking about here. A lot of credence is given to this idea that, well, not everyone has a car, but no credence is ever given to what if a, a one-bedroom unit has two cars? It's never talked about as a possibility when it's more likely that someone is going to have 1.5 cars per spot than 0.5 cars per spot in this town. And all these parking studies, and it's unfortunate to maybe have to redo them, but COVID has done a lot of unfortunate things to the society and redoing the parking study in light of massive increases, possibly permanent increases in work from home, may be a neat reason to redo this parking study. Just, you know, some, I, I wonder how much, how many new developments are actually going to be covered by the shared parking requirement standards? And, and I wonder that because if they're actually trying to capture a lot of new shared parking, it has to apply broader than what it's supposedly covering now. And that's why I think it's actually going to cover more than we're led to believe. Because if you just have big upper-floor commercial uses requiring some of this new development requiring the shared parking and it's not applicable if you don't increase the ground floor square footage and it's not applicable if you do interior remodeling and it's not applicable upon sale or transfer, you're not talking about any new buildings real, I mean, the benefits here are so minimal that it's almost like if, 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 if the universe of buildings that this is going to affect adversely is really this small, then there's not enough upside to be doing all this, which I think means it's not as small as we're being led to believe. The universe of buildings is much larger. The universe of time is much larger because we're being said, oh, it doesn't transfer on sale or it's not required on sale or transfer. Well, where does it say that? Again, ambiguity. The shared parking is a taking because if you decide you need your parking all day, you aren't allowed to make that decision anymore as a business owner. If you are workaholic who works 16 hours a day, you're not allowed to work 16 hours a day and have a parking spot at your office because you have to give it up for 12. If you work from home, go to school from home and take care of your children and you park your car there every single hour of every single weekday and only use it on the weekends, apparently you have to figure out what to do with your car for those other 12 hours. And then if anyone's lived in Iowa City for any number of years, you've learned that the, probably one of the most profitable companies down there are tow truck companies. And if we want Cedar Falls to become one of those towns where every time you park, you have to worry about getting towed, then let's keep going down this path because that's what it's going to be. I'm going to buy a tow truck company if this passes because all you're going to be doing as a private business owner with this ambiguous, totally odd shared parking concept is towing people out of your parking lot, left, right, and center. And think about.
You're at five minutes, but I'll give one in addition.
Yeah, think about if that's the kind of downtown we want. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Vajpay. Other speakers from the public? Yes, our respect. Name an address for the record, please, sir.
Jim Bender, 1816 Valley High Drive, Cedar Falls. Just a couple of questions. Karen had alluded to part of the parking issue being alleviated by on-street parking. It seems like the code may be leaning that way, that it's street parking that gets counted for a development such as Second Street. Is that true?
So, yeah, we can go ahead and answer that question.
I can answer that question. So right now, projects that have residential, there's no requirement for commercial parking on a new project, so they, they get a pass on the current code. For residential parking, the, the current practice is to count visitor parking requirement as on-street parking. So the new code, the idea was the shared parking would do something similar. You'd get to count any parking spaces that were directly abutting your property, similar to how we count the visitor parking right now, would count toward that shared parking requirement.
Okay, additional questions, Mr. Bender?
Well, that didn't really answer the question. My question is, is on the on-street parking in the Second Street Row House District that's being proposed, where are the visitors to park? I'll say it that way.
Okay, sorry, I misunderstood.
I mean, I'm just saying, there's going to be overflow parking, so where are those folks going to be parked? Because this doesn't allow, it seems to me, it does not allow for a public or visitor parking, shared or otherwise component. There's no extra parking, the way it looks to me.
Okay, so, so Mr. Bender, if you have additional questions, then I'll ask.
Yeah, I do. I think she alluded to the, this in, in the introduction, but is the downtown vision plan meant to be a solution to our downtown parking issue? It seems like it should with the parking requirements for each character district and as the name implies, it's the future vision being proposed for our downtown. If it's not meant to be a solution, why have parking requirements for each new character district and how were those arrived at? In the downtown vision plan, character districts, are the parking requirements and restrictions, were those based off our parking study or were those put in based on a housing type in another city that may have mass transit that we do not have? And the third question, and it's kind of multi-phased, what's the population of the downtown vision area? And more specifically, what's the population as defined by our parking study in the immediate downtown from First Street to Seventh Street, State to Franklin? And if we don't know the answer to that population question, how can we effectively offer solutions through a new zoning ordinance where everyone seems to have the parking issue on their mind and has concerns about it, but we don't know how many people live there or how many cars they drive?
Okay, thank you, Mr. Bender. So four questions there. The first one, Ms. Howard, you might still have because you'd asked for clarification on Second Street, I believe it's Second Street parking?
Right, so for the row houses, if you're intending to do row houses like they show in the vision plan, again, those don't require any shared parking. So they require parking spaces. It's one, I can go back to that slide so I don't misstate here. So basically if it's owner-occupied, you only have to provide one parking space, but most of the time people are going to build two. A row house is going to be at least 20 feet wide, so you're going to have room for a tuck-under garage behind. That would mean two parking spaces would be able to be provided for each row house. So the requirement is one per unit plus one per bedroom for each bedroom beyond two. So, and there's no shared parking requirement, so you don't have to put any shared parking on-site. Now, it's true that anything that's on the street is available for visitor parking. So if you're visiting somebody in one of the row homes, there is parking along Second Street and so just like everybody else, they would park, park on the street.
Okay, and then he'd asked, is the downtown vision plan ordinance intended to be a solution to downtown parking and how was that arrived at? Can you provide any insight on that?
Well, I, I think a lot of this presentation is about how we arrived at it and why, what the purpose was behind what we're trying to do. So that's a, the vision plan, of course, this is not the sole solution to downtown parking. You know, when we did the parking study, we can see on the screen here, the parking study is really what, what, what was done to study the downtown parking situation. So there was obviously lots of different potential solutions to the situations that we have downtown now and then in the future. So only one of these was to right-size the parking requirements in the zoning code. And I think the reason for that is if we continue to over-prescribe parking for the private development, you just get more and more of those lots that are locked up during peak times and not available for, for use during the peak times, which is what the parking consultant found, is that there's an awful lot of private parking lots that probably were forced to be there because of the high parking requirements and sit empty then when we actually need public parking downtown.
Okay, and one question, I'm going to need some help, Mr. Bender. I can't read one of my words. It said, is the parking, or is this based on parking blank or based on housing type that is served by transit? So what word am I missing there? Based on parking?
Mass transit.
The question was, is the downtown character districts, are those parking requirements and restrictions, were they based off the parking study?
Study, okay.
Or were they put in place based on housing types from other communities that have mass transit opportunities that we don't have?
Okay.
So is it from another city like Arlington, Virginia or something, that housing type? Or did you use the parking study to come up with the requirements for each district?
Okay, thanks, Mr. Bender. Appreciate you clarifying that. So Ms. Howard?
So the parking study studied the downtown and again, we can show the slide on the screen that I have up. This is the area that was studied downtown. So the focus was on the immediate downtown area. And so this information was taken along with observed parking and discussions with community members and stakeholders trying to balance the parking needs downtown. All those factors were taken into account to establish the parking requirements that are proposed in the code. There's many, many communities that have decided that they need, the government needs to get out of the, the business of providing, requiring or dictating how much parking in a downtown. of providing, requiring, or dictating how much parking in a downtown area. So, you'll find many, many communities that have basically eliminated their parking requirements downtown. Now, obviously, we did not propose that here because we don't have transit and we do have a lot of people that have cars in Cedar Falls. And so, this is incremental change from what is proposed or currently required in the code.
Okay, thank you. And then, the last question was, did this factor in the population of the downtown vision? Or is it, do we have a population center for the downtown character-proposed district? And is that population, was it the same as the study area?
Do you have the downtown vision? And then, you also have a population for the immediate downtown?
Okay. Ms. Howard, do we have, can you provide that answer?
So, I don't have those figures at my fingertips, of course. And the best source for that information, of course, is the census. The census blocks, I think we provided answer to Mr. Bender's question to him personally. He could ask that question by email. So, we gave him best estimates based on the block counts that were in the latest census for the downtown area. I can't remember off the top of my head what that figure was, but... And then, with regard to the immediate downtown, of course, we're going to be basing it on what we've observed with the parking requirement, parking counts that we had downtown.
Okay, thank you. Other questions from the public or comments?
I would be happy to clarify some of those things that Mr. Vashpay brought up as well, if you're interested.
Certainly. Yeah, and we'll get to you, sir.
One of the things he brought up is where does it say in the code that when somebody sells their building, they don't have to provide? That is just standard zoning. So, zoning never kicks in unless you're changing your use or changing your, changing something on your property. So, if you're merely selling it, there's nothing in the zoning code that kicks in when you sell your property. And that applies with all of our current zoning, and it would be the same for this new zoning. That's just standard zoning 101.
Okay. So, sir, if you'd like to come forward, name an address for the record, please, and you'll have up to five minutes.
Kevin Harvard, 1715 Whispering Pine Circle. I spent Sunday reading through the vision plan because I had never read it totally. So, I wanted to read it so I at least could speak somewhat coherently about this. But I just have two questions and then a comment, if I may. Does, do we have future projections of our population in this plan? I didn't see that there were any on the future projections, specifically the downtown area. If no future projections are included in the downtown vision plan, how can we say that the parking requirements for each character district are compatible for our downtown future? We know exactly what our parking, our existing parking stall count is. Why don't we know what the population is or what we think it may be in the future? Could we or shouldn't we possibly track this? And the second question is, if we don't know the population of the area inside the downtown vision plan or the downtown area specifically, how can the consultant tell us how many people will be walking to our downtown restaurants? It's my belief that they really can't. A successful restaurant downtown could take 80 to 100 parking stalls. So, lastly, I just want to, my comment, I would survey the downtown, how many bedrooms, commercials, square feet total, upper-story commercial space, occupancy rates of the commercials should all be tracked. These are the criteria affecting parking requirements. From what I could tell, and I could be wrong, this parking, this survey does not address any of those. And if it doesn't, how can you vote to move it forward? Thank you.
Thank you, sir. And for those questions, Ms. Howard, are you able to track along with what he had asked already? Or do you need me to repeat those questions? He asked about, for, in the plan or in the study work, would we be looking at future projections of populations in the plan? And how would the structure of the plan account for increased population?
So, similar to any kind of zoning requirements, you're always anticipating that any new development is going to require new things. So, parking is then required for new development moving forward. We can't, and of course, that happens, we don't know exactly how quickly new development will occur. It will supposedly occur based on market demand. So, if there's more demand for housing downtown, more demand for commercial downtown, that's what causes people to want to redevelop their properties. And I don't think there's a good way to estimate what that would be. So, no parking, you know, the zoning isn't really based on projections of population.
Okay. Other questions?
Mr. Green, or Mayor Green?
Yes.
Along with that, with his question on the occupancy limits, was that not included either? Like factoring in a restaurant and what their occupancy is and what the parking requirement is?
Well, it was our understanding that there was not an interest in requiring parking for commercial development in the first floor. If that were the case, if we put a new requirement into the zoning code for, say, a downtown restaurant, that would mean that, then it would trigger it if somebody sold their property and, say, it was retail on the first floor and they sold it and somebody wanted to put a restaurant there. Restaurants would generate more parking demand than a retail business. So, that would mean that they would have to find parking somewhere for their new restaurant. So, I think the idea was for that, and this is what we went through with that shared parking presentation, was the best way to provide parking in a downtown setting is shared publicly-available parking because otherwise, you're setting aside private land that may or may not be needed for parking in the future. And if it's not needed, it's going to sit empty. And what the focus should be on is trying to find ways for the, it to be shared strategically, shared, public parking available. And that should maybe be the strategy to focus on for, particularly for commercial development. And that's been the strategy, is to provide public parking to serve the commercial uses. And that's been the case since the downtown overlay was adopted in 2004.
Okay, thank you. Do we have other final questions before coming back to council? Yes, sir, name an address for the record, please.
Kyle Demlow, 2113 Vera Way. Just one question, kind of segwayed into that. So, let's say a restaurant, if we're looking at commercial, first floor is not required for any parking requirements, but what about two-story commercials? So, a two-story restaurant. At that point in time, are we requiring parking for that? And when we're talking about shared parking, hours of operation, I would kind of give an idea, you know, as an example of, you know, I have a restaurant right now and we have people there from 8:00 in the morning till 1:00 in the morning. So, that 12-hour span would be difficult. With that, also, if it was just going to be first floor, I believe I saw somewhere, and I could be wrong, but we're really trying to get away from first-floor commercial. As far as in building new properties, we want to go to two stories. So, is there really opportunity for new first-floor commercial development? Or are we trying to go to two stories? And if we are going to two stories, then it automatically kicks into shared parking as well. And also with that, we talked about the parking right now that could be perceived as not being used. But that's not going to be, that's grandfathered in. So, we're talking about all the potential new development. So, how many parking spots are we really talking about that could be used for shared? Because the example is all this prior parking that will not get touched, if I understand that correctly. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Demlow. Ms. Howard, I have those two questions.
Okay. So, for a two-story building, the first floor, if it's commercial, would not require any parking. So, you would not calculate any, so say it was 5,000 square feet, no parking would be required for that first story. Second story, third, say it had two stories above that and it was 10,000 square feet, you'd have to provide shared parking for the upper-floor commercial. If it was only 5,000 square feet or less, then there's no shared parking requirement. So, for the small building, there was, our understanding was there was a desire to have flexibility to allow for small buildings or redevelopment of small buildings. So, for 5,000 or less, upper-floor commercial, then there's no parking required.
Mayor?
Yes.
It was mentioned that there's a desire to get away from first-floor commercial? Is that accurate?
I'm not sure I quite understood Kyle's question. There's no desire to get away from first-floor commercial. Obviously, any building's going to have, that's a desired, ground-floor commercial is a desired use downtown.
That's what I thought.
It's just that we would exempt it from the parking requirements.
Okay, and then, what was the question he had about space? If he had open hours from 8:00 AM to 1:00 AM, how would that factor in? I suppose it had to be on a new development, right?
Right.
Not on current.
Right.
But on a new development, what would that mean for him not being able to meet those time requirements potentially?
Well, like I said, it's, if it's shared parking, right now, there's no requirement for commercial at all. So, if in a new project, they'd have to provide some shared parking. And then, they'd have to decide, when is their lowest peak time? When they feel like the on-street parking is not going to be enough for their business, then they could share it during the time when they feel like their parking demand is the lowest.
And any other questions from the gallery for now? Yes, ma'am, or a comment, it's fine, too. Just name an address for the record, please, ma'am.
Julie Schimmick, 104 Main Street. And you explained very well the cost to the developer and the seller on parking requirements, what that would do. But what about the cost to the current businesses and the loss of customer and clientele with additional building downtown? Everybody says parking stalls cost money. But did you know, if somebody, if, take an eight-hour day, you spend $5 an hour throughout that eight-hour day, that's $40 times 365 days a year. And that ends up a revenue of $14,600 to the businesses. And I would say most people spend more than just $5 in an hour of shopping downtown. So, I mean, there's another way to look at, rather than the cost of parking, there is a revenue benefit to the current businesses.
Okay, thank you. So, with that, we're at 6:50 now, and I do want to provide some time for council discussion. We're going to go past our 7:00 start date, I'm sure, or time, I'm sure, for a regular council meeting. But I do want to allow some council questions and discussion. And plus, I'd be looking for a motion of how we want to proceed from here if we want to continue a separate committee meeting on the 18th because we potentially had two. Or do we want to proceed with the, having the first reading on the 18th of October or the first reading on the 1st of November as Councilmember Cruz had motioned in our last meeting? So, we have a few options there. But before that, if we have some additional questions or comments from council, I certainly look to have that here. Yes, Councilmember Cruz?
Thank you. An interesting comment brought up was, what is considered the business hours for a business? We have a thriving bar/restaurant, entertainment district downtown, and relate that to nighttime. So, 5:00 or 11:00, some restaurants open and they're open until 2:00 AM. That's their normal business. How do you determine when they give up or they share 12 hours' worth of parking? That's concerning to me. And then, the fact that you're saying they can have it 600 feet away for the shared parking, which is two football fields away, if you put it in perspective, so somebody can understand. So, somebody on the intersection of Second and Main, they'd be looking at Fifth Street for parking and then walking down. So, can you elaborate on those comments there, particularly nighttime?
Well, there's always a balance between, in zoning, between trying to be flexible and trying to be specific and objective. And now, with this proposed code, we're trying to be much more objective with the standards. But we did try to provide some flexibility for the property owners to decide when they want to make their parking available based on what's being proposed, what kind of space is being proposed in their building. So, the parking requirements are just that, that they say that for eight hours during either nighttime or daytime. And I think that can be then defined by that property owner. If they have a building that has certain types of uses, that they're going to need their reserved parking and they would like their shared parking to be also available to their tenants during those times, they get to kind of talk about when is the best time to share their parking and when, when do they need it to be reserved parking? So, the more we try to define that, the less flexibility is there for each property owner. And we've debated both things. Is it taking of property rights versus trying to provide more parking downtown? And so, it's about trying to strike that balance, provide some flexibility for those property owners, but yet, provide some certainty that there'll be at least marginally more parking required or provided downtown with the new development as it occurs.
So, if I could continue on that?
Yes.
I did a quick count on the fire marshal occupancy of the bars and restaurants downtown. And I got right around 3,700 required spots. And let's say half of those people drive and they come down in two per car, you still need 925 car spots to park if they're half occupied, let's say. That's a significant number. And then, along with what I just said earlier about what time of day they typically operate, it's nighttime on Thursday, Friday, and Saturday. And predominantly, some businesses make 90% of their money on Friday and Saturday. And if you have a really high demand for parking Friday and Saturday nights and the residential people are home for the weekend to enjoy this thriving entertainment district that we have, and we see more coming onboard all the time, I think the concept of remote parking is misguided that you're going to gobble up other people's spot that someone could then try to develop for themselves. It just doesn't work in my mind.
Thank you. Other comments from council? Yes, Councilmember DeBir?
I have a question. If, on the slides where you talked about the proposed versus private parking requirements, if each one of those where you had like a half or a quarter or 75.75, if each one of those was simply one parking spot and there was no mandatory shared requirements, instead, it was just, you know, they could work together as they wanted on shared but not making it mandatory, how much additional requirement would that actually make on the new development by having no percentages or no halves or quarters or 75.75, but instead, just the number one? Would that create an extreme overabundance of parking? Or it just seems like it would be much simpler?
Well, of course, the parking is usually expressed in ratios. And so, it's just calculated and always would be rounded to the nearest whole number based on the number of bedrooms on the site or the amount of square footage of the site.
Well, not really, because 10 bedrooms would be, if it's a half or .50, that would be five spots.
Right.
Versus if it's one, then it's, a 10-bedroom unit would be 10.
That's right, yeah. But that would just be calculated using the ratio. So, I guess I'm not, maybe I'm not understanding your question.
It just seemed like if you just simply went to one instead of using a percentage or the half, the .25, the .5, or the .75, you wouldn't have to require mandatory shared parking.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Councilmember Sires?
I think the shared parking is nothing more than the taking of private property. And there's so many problems with it when the people stay on the weekend and the things that Daryl had mentioned. I just don't see how it can work. I don't know why the people who have the buildings now and are required one for the first bedroom and a half for the second should have to suffer with a new development that doesn't require the same thing. It just seems like we're making special, giving special treatment to some developers while kicking others. The whole thing just doesn't really have a nice, even fairness to it as far as I'm concerned with the taking of parking and then the lowering of the different requirements on the buildings. That's all.
Councilmember Harding?
I think it just depends on what kind of downtown you envision for Cedar Falls. I mean, the lesser number is designed to create more development and, which is designed to create more business. And the shared parking is a creative aspect of trying to create more public parking. So, it... So it, I mean, you can look at it as a lot of different things, but at the moment, you know, it seems like a creative, a possible creative solution to helping with the public parking, not solving it, of course, because that's going to be more future conversations about, if we grow it, then, you know, do we get a ramp, things like that. So I think that comes down to, what kind of downtown do we envision for Cedar Falls? If we're going to park a restaurant with 80 customers, or Daryl's saying the occupancy, and you're going to put parking to accommodate that restaurant, well, you're not going to have it downtown. You're going to have a mall, because that's not the way downtowns work. Downtowns are dense, and you can't provide 80 parking spots for a restaurant downtown, unfortunately. It's just, that's what creates other urban areas and the mall. Now, again, I'm not saying, I know that this is the answer, but I think that's really what it boils down to. What kind of vision do we see for Cedar Falls? Because we're not going to be able to have 1,000 or 3,000 parking spaces, unfortunately.
Other thoughts? Councilman Miller?
I agree with Councilman Harding, for the most part, on this. I mean, it does boil down to what type of downtown do you want? And I appreciate all the work that everyone has done to try and move this along. I hope the parking side of this discussion continues. I'd like to see us have another conversation about it, because I feel like we have to look each other in the eyes and find a solution here, or this conversation's going to go on for another 10 years. So I hope that continues. That said, I also want to see the downtown zoning code move forward. So I'd like to make a motion that we move forward at the next council meeting, with the second reading, I believe, if that's possible.
So second, yeah, I apologize from earlier. So second reading, and this next. So it's been motioned to have that second reading at the October 18th council meeting? Is there a second to that?
Second.
The motion and seconded, open for additional discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Councilmember Cruz?
Along the comments that you said earlier when you introduced this, we have yet to discuss the actual cost of a parking ramp.
And this discussion is for the private parking?
I understand that, Mr. Mayor. We are going to, because parking encompasses all aspects of parking downtown. And a parking ramp is a central component of parking. How you finance it? Is it going to be shared with private-public development of the parking ramp? Danny, can you put up that page 32 that we've used in the past, from a previous?
He's there? Okay.
If we can see in here, all of the burgundy buildings are proposed, or visionary buildings being built, and many of them are taking out and using up the existing service parking. I see one parking ramp in the third block on Washington, and then there's another one that looks like what was or is Viking Pump to, next to the water reclamation plant. So this is the vision that we've adopted and approved, and we're going towards this, and it includes parking ramps. So we need to have a discussion and another committee meeting on the costs and how we finance the parking ramp, if we're going to go that way. I'd also like to amend this motion with, along Susan's lines, to have not a half a parking spot per bedroom, but one spot per bedroom, and those bedrooms be required to be shared, or excuse me, those parking spots be shared instead of the remote 600 feet away. Because when you take the parking 600 feet away, people don't go there.
Okay, so you've motioned to amend the existing motion forward to have the second reading on the October 18th with an insert for...
Okay, let me back up then. We had agreed we're going to discuss the second reading, or have the second reading on November 1st.
No, that's not what's the motion on the floor.
I understand that, but we had previous council meeting, we agreed to do it on the 1st.
Currently, we're working on an amendment, or excuse me, on a motion to have it on the 18th, and it's a valid motion forward that council is considering right now. So with that motion and second, for the second reading to occur on October 18th now, any further discussion on having it on the 18th? Otherwise, I'll call for the vote. Okay. So again, to be sure what we're voting on, this is the motion to have the second reading?
I have a question.
Certainly.
Okay. So there's a motion to have the second hearing on October 18th. If this motion fails, will go back to having it read on November 1st?
Correct, because it was already decided for that, as council.
Is there going to be another meeting on, if it fails, are we going to have, talk about parking more next time, or are we just going to have nothing?
You can still have a motion to have that.
I'm just curious if we had any plans to have any more conversation on parking?
Can you say that again, please?
I said, I'm just curious if there was a plan for next time to talk about it more, another presentation, or do we feel comfortable with what we've presented?
Okay, so, let me say, I don't want to get too tangled in the motions. I'll open it up for council discussion, if you think that you would want to have a committee meeting first.
Mr. Mayor?
We could amend for that. We could say, amend the current motion to also have a committee meeting.
Yeah.
So would you want to make that motion, or would somebody like to make that motion to have a committee meeting on the 18th?
I guess it depends on whether we want to talk about the public. You know, that's where it gets complex, because I feel comfortable with the explanations, and I feel like I want to think about it more, but I feel comfortable with where we've talked about private parking. So is it time to talk about the public aspect of the ramp, even though I know that this zoning ordinance, it only indirectly affects that? But to Daryl's point, the public parking, there is kind of a Venn diagram there. It does kind of cross over into the fact that they are related to each other, even if it's indirectly. So I would, I guess, I would like to have that conversation.
I'll make a motion to amend that to include a committee meeting on public parking on the 18th as well.
Okay, great.
Like I said, I want to see us, we have to find a compromise on parking, because this is years in the making, and we have to find a compromise. And unfortunately, we're not in this chamber alone, but the compromise is what we got to find here. And it doesn't feel good to everybody, and I don't think anybody walks away completely happy, but we have to find a compromise on parking.
I would second the motion to, the amendment, I'm sorry, to talk about public parking aspect at committee next time.
Okay. Any council discussion on that? Or can we just take the vote?
My only comment would be, we're not going to resolve this in two readings or one more discussion about parking. I think everybody in this room recognizes that downtown Cedar Falls, as it is right now, is one of the best things we have going in our community. And I believe that the plan that we're trying to move forward is just going to make that better. But we're not going to solve the parking problem in a couple meetings. It's going to be having this kind of discussion for several years to come. I mean, I'm not a business owner downtown, so I can't fully appreciate the frustration you feel with all of this. But I also don't want to delay moving forward with a longer-range plan to expand the great stuff that's already happening on Main Street to other parts of downtown. And this parking thing's going to come up every few blocks. So let's accept the fact now that we're all going to continue to have these discussions about what's the best way to do it. I don't know that a parking ramp's the best thing. I don't know that half a parking spot for a bedroom is a good thing either, but if we work together, we can probably come up with some sort of solution. But if we just, every time we've got a recommendation and we don't move forward because this issue is so contentious, we're not going to move forward. So I'd just like to assume there's going to be ongoing, and hopefully friendly, discussions about how do we resolve, together, resolve the parking problem. But I want to move forward with making that conversation possible. If we don't pass the ordinance, it's a moot point, anyway.
Mr. Mayor?
I think there's far too many issues here with the shared parking and all the different parking requirements. It's not just the parking, there's all kinds of other things in here that I disagree with. I think we'd be best to say no to this for now, and come back and relook at it later, because the people who are really, truly involved, the owners down there, they're not satisfied with it, and neither am I.
Okay, so that's not the motion on the floor right now?
No, I understand.
The motion is to amend, to have the committee of the whole meeting on the 18th be for a public parking discussion, and this vote will be just to tack that on. We haven't even decided that'll be part of the main motion later, of having that second reading on the 18th. So any other discussion for this? So what we're voting on is just to tack on having a committee of the whole meeting on the 18th for public parking.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
I'm fine with that. I want the vision plan to move forward, so whatever we have to do to make everybody feel heard, but it would be helpful that if people don't like an idea, that they come back with an idea. Just to say, I don't like it, and then the conversation is supposed to stop. We've had two weeks, and I've not had a single person who's got a concern with this reach out with an actual idea of how to fix it. And to act like the city hasn't, you know, there's been two parking studies done. I understand that we're in a pandemic, so things change. But to insinuate that there's never been anything done to try to fix the problem in the first place is totally false, and to insinuate that the city doesn't try to support downtown and the business owners is also false. We took the paid parking out, and all the money that was attached to that is now sitting somewhere, not being used, to try to support downtown. So I'm okay with continuing the conversation, but somebody's got to come with some ideas, and it's not going to be the citizens footing the whole bill.
Okay, thank you. So it's been motion and seconded to have the amendment added, to have a committee of the whole meeting to discuss public parking on the 18th prior to the reading. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
So let's...
Well, my question was simply was...
We're in the middle of a vote right now, please.
Okay, no.
So all in, so let's see a show of hands, aye? 1, 2, 3, 4, 5. Opposed? 1, 2. Okay, so that amendment does pass, and it brings us back to the original motion as amended. So this is to have the second reading on October 18th, rather than the original November 1st. So Councilmember DeBir?
So basically, that would give you the second reading on October 18th with no changes from tonight, or what might happen at the committee meeting at the next meeting. So you'd be moving ahead with the second reading as is now, without any improvements or changes to it? Is that correct?
Well, if there were, at the meeting, if the council decided to amend in whatever meeting is the second reading, it would drop it back to probably committee of the whole, right? Because you're talking about changes to parking?
Back to planning and zoning.
Sorry, yeah, planning and zoning. So it doesn't necessarily mean approving it as is. We can't ask for amendments in the next meeting, but it does reset the clock on it or bring it back to P and Z. Councilmember Cruz?
In light of the fact that we now approved, seemingly so, a committee meeting on the public parking, I'd like to amend this so that the next second reading will be, as we originally said, November 1st. To Susan's point, that gives us time to digest what the public is saying. Hopefully, to Kelly's point, solutions from the public, whether it's one parking spot and get rid of the half, send in your comments, constructive comments, and concerns, and solutions. The nighttime aspect, we still haven't found out really what that amounts to, and so on. So I'd like to motion...
There's already a motion on the floor.
amend the motion.
We have, well...
Just vote no.
We have to vote up or down the first one, because it's already specific to say, have the meeting on the 18th. That will answer the question. If this is voted down, then we still will be on...
Go November 1st.
Right. Does that make sense? So there's no need to motion.
Basically, if this votes no, it goes automatically to November 1st.
Right, still is November 1st, so...
It'd be the ideal scenario to allow the public to...
To his point, he can't make a motion to amend right now? Is that what I'm understanding?
Well, if he made a motion to amend to have it as November 1st, did I understand the motion? Or were you looking to motion? It's a moot point, because that's already what is going to happen.
Well, then if you would drop your motion, we'd automatically go to November 1st, like we're going to anyway, and have our committee meeting on the 18th.
And I would take that, Mr. Rogers, tell me if I'm wrong on the procedure, but I would take that as the council consensus that we wanted to have that meeting, or the public parking meeting. I would do that anyway. So if you want to drop the, or withdraw the motion, that it still would occur on November 1st, and we'll still have the committee of the whole meeting to discuss public parking on the 18th prior.
Sure. And I have no desire to extend this any longer. I understand your concerns with parking, but I think there are implications to the downtown zoning code. But the zoning code is form, fit, function. How do we want our city to look? And parking is a part of that, but I don't think they run hand-in-hand. So I'd like to see us vote on the downtown zoning code soon as possible.
Okay. So that motion stands, and we can discuss that as going forward. That's really interesting. Thank you. So any further discussion on having it on the 1st? So we heard Councilmember Cruz's comments on it, and any others?
I just reiterated what Susan said, that we have a committee meeting, and generally, you take the results of the committee meeting, and then digest it, and then produce possible changes.
Okay.
Isn't the committee meeting going to be about public parking?
Yes.
Didn't we just say that?
Yes.
And tonight's was about private parking?
Correct. Okay, so if nothing else, it's been motion and seconded to have the second reading of this downtown zoning ordinance on October 18th with a committee of the whole public policy, or excuse me, public parking discussion as committee of the whole on the 18th prior to that meeting. Does that make sense to everyone? Okay, so motion and seconded, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Nay.
Okay, so let's see a show of hands for aye. I count 1, 2, 3, 4. And for nay, 1, 2, 3. So that does pass to have that second reading on October 18th with the committee of the whole session prior to, to discuss public parking. So that would conclude the items on our agenda for tonight, for committee of the whole. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Motion seconded, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, we are adjourned, and that brings us to need about five minutes for Channel 15 to reset for the next meeting for regular city council. So if you'd like to stay, you're welcome to.